The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Good evening, everyone. The time is now 7 o'clock and we are going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start with our National Anthem. And that is going to be performed by the Bristol Central Student Led Clarinet Trio, Paris Machado, Robin Pan, and Jeanne John.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm now going to ask that everybody please join in a moment of silence. We're going to observe Ruth Ann Field, who was the physical education teacher, adult education teacher and guidance counselor at Northeast School, Chippens Hill Middle School, and Bristol Central, whose tenure reigned from October 29th, 1979 to December 18th, 2019. And also Marion Giordano Crum, business teacher and classroom teacher at Bristol Central, Bristol Eastern, and Mountain View, from September 3rd, 1974 to June 30th, 1994. Thank you. I'm also going to start by recapping our meeting norms, which have condensed since our last meeting together. All participants will actively participate, engage in the work of the meeting, and have equal voice and airtime. We will all assume positive intentions by respecting and honoring the diversity of opinions, beliefs, and perspectives. We will cultivate trust by being honest and focus on ideas, practices, and the work, not people. Norms will be upheld during all meetings and in all interactions outside of the formal meetings. Next, we'll be having some staff and student recognition.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'd like to invite Peter Kelly up, Liaison Kelly, to come up to speak on behalf of the Bristol Business Ed Foundation regarding the mini-grants.
Thank you, Doctor. I'm going to go off script a bit because most, a lot of people here already heard what I had to say over at the museum. I'd just like to say, after seeing the mini-grant award ceremony at the Imagination Museum, very inspirational. As I mentioned to Courtney Decker, as we were discussing it afterwards, if I was a young parent and happened upon this mini-grant reception and I was considering a school system for my young children, Bristol would be at the top of the list because, you know, it's plain to see there's motivated, inspired teachers and that think outside the box. And, you know, it was, it was an unbelievable feeling that I got, knowing that these teachers are in charge of our young children. In talking to Dr. Dieter, we discussed how inspirational this can be to perhaps a student that is on the cusp of whether they're going to buy into education or not. And he shared with me, he's actually seen that with students. And I had the pleasure of meeting some students that have been the beneficiary of these grants. And they all seem to be on a path to success. So that's something that is great to see. If you ever have a chance to attend one of these ceremonies, please do. And everyone that can, since it's a big funding part of the Bristol Education Mini-Grant Program, please attend trivia night so we can make a lot of money to hand out that money in grants next year's. Thank you.
So, Mr. Kelly reported this evening that in excess of $415,000 in grants have been awarded to Bristol staff and students. And that's really amazing when you think about the impact of that kind of funding. So with that, we are extremely grateful to the Bristol Business Ed Foundation for your continued support of our teachers and really by extension, our students. This longstanding partnership has resulted in many exciting and innovative programs, which our staff and students fondly engage year after year. It was a pleasure reading all of the entries and participating on the selection committee this year, so I thank you for that. That was quite a, quite a joy for me. We just attended the award reception that Mr. Kelly has provided some details of. What I'd like to do at this point is to congratulate this year's winners that are present. So if you are present when I read your name, I'm just going to ask you to stand and we'll hold our recognition until we are done. We had a total of 17 grant winners for this round. So I'll read the title of the grant, as well as the name of the staff and the school that they're from. The first is entitled Break Zone, and that is Stacy Valentine at Edgewood School. Claimation Collaboration, Tina Taylor at West Bristol. Qubit, Mosaic Design Process, Chris Woods at Green Hills. Geometry, A New Approach, Michelle Burns and Sarah Mastry at Bristol Eastern High School. Hubble Hounds Are Happy You're Here, Lisa Ayotte at Hubble. Kinetic Connections, Bridget Gola, Special Services Access here at the Board of Ed. Math For All, our Teacher of the Year, Marcia DeShane at Mountain View School. Middle School Robotics, we have a combined team here of Adam Sample from Green Hill School, Rocco Martino at West Bristol, Vince Janetta and Dave Lucina from Northeast Middle School, Rodney Ellsworth, Robert McConnell, and Robert Walling at Chippens Hill Middle School. The Model UN High School Conference, Jason Cirillo and Wendy Adams, Thomas Lavoy and John Stavens of Bristol Eastern High School. Road to Independence, Larry Cavino, B Prep Adult Ed. Spanish for Everyone, Justin McDermott, Bristol Eastern High School. Supporting Our Crew, Marcia DeShane, Mountain View School. Trip of a Lifetime, David DiGiacomo, Courtney Decker, Mark Kilray, and Paul Philippan from Bristol Eastern High School. And lastly, Unlocking Student Engagement, Michael, Michelle Canton, and Carolyn Palmero from Northeast Middle School. Again, thank you to the recipients for your innovative and creative thinking, and we look forward to hearing about your projects in the future.
Next on our agenda will be the approval of minutes. The first meeting that we need to approve is the November 6th, 2019 regular meeting, which was the former Board of Education. May I please have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we will be approving the minutes for the December 4th, 2019 regular meeting. You've all received a copy of the minutes in your packet. Are there any corrections or abstentions? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the December 4th regular meeting as written?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to committee reports, there were only two committees that have met this past month, Finance and Operations. We will begin with Operations. Is Commissioner Carlson or Ms. Brown giving the report tonight? Ms. Brown? Come on up.
Happy New Year, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
The Operations Committee met on December 17th. There were three main items up for discussion on that evening. The first was the rental of our facility and fields. Second was the current enrollment and feasibility. And third was capital improvement plan. So the first topic with regard to the rental of our facilities, the district is realizing revenue that is slightly more than the overtime that we have paid to our custodial staff in order to rent the facilities. The additional revenue can then cover the cost of consumable items, such as paper goods in the lavatories and electrical costs overhead during the time of usage. So a rate increase was not recommended by the administration at this time. With regard to the field usage and rental, the Operations Committee believed that the district is charging considerably less than all neighboring communities and is missing some opportunity to generate revenue that can then be used to maintain and repair our turf fields. As such, the Operations Committee did vote to turn that over for discussion to the Policy Committee. The second item on our agenda was the current enrollment and feasibility. Dr. Carbone led a discussion regarding the enrollment forecast from the study, excuse me, from the study conducted by Malone and McBroom back in 2017. Malone McBroom conducted an analysis of Bristol's past and present school enrollments and projected them forward 10 years. And you can find that full study online. It's actually under Appendix A and Volume 2 of the feasibility study. Dr. Carbone pointed out that the current district enrollment exceeds their projection. So the administration requested an update to the enrollment study to ensure accurate data by which the district can then move forward and plan accordingly. Dr. Carbone was going to be reaching out to Malone and McBroom to update their forecast. I don't know if you wanted to share that at this time or...
I have since reached out and we will engage them in furthering their study and looking at our current enrollment trends and patterns so that we have accurate information as we look at facilities and as we bring on other schools.
And then lastly, with regards to capital improvement, we did present the 10-year capital improvement plan to the committee, and the committee voted to move the plan forward to this full board. In particular, the gym floor at Northeast Middle School does appear on the plan in year one. However, we would like to go and request funding for the current year so that the work can be done immediately at the close of the school year. This is going to require asbestos abatement, and planning needs to take place now to get those orders in line and ready to go. And we cannot wait until the Board of Finance and the full budget proceedings because when those finish in April, it'll be too late to secure all of that. So we're going to ask that you add two items and place them on the agenda for vote. The first would be for us to go to the Board of Finance and ask for a special appropriation request under New Business.
I can make a motion to add the Board of Finance Special Appropriation Request to the agenda under New Business? All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second would be to add the 10-year capital improvement plan to the agenda also under New Business.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. We'll talk about those more in New Business.
I won't go far because I think I have the next committee also.
Do you want to say anything, Commissioner Vibbert, about finance?
Before I hand it over to Mrs. Brown to give the details, the financial details, I just want to mention two things. One is the workshop dates, the budget workshop dates for the Board of Education are currently January 21st and January 29th. We have snow days that are the immediately following dates, January 22nd and January 30th. It's really important that all of us do our best to be there. This is extremely important business that we'll be discussing. The other thing I wanted to mention, I had mentioned it last month, that I was going to be going to a CAPE meeting, this State Relations Committee, and to talk about what they were going to be bringing forth to the legislature during this upcoming short session. One of the things was a, something that Mr. Wilson put forward to them, to take the cap off of the excess cost grant. And they are going to be working hard on that, but it's really very important, I mean, we have to be realistic. On their own, they're not going to, I'm going to be realistic, nothing's going to happen. We have to, ourselves, also be contacting people in Hartford, legislators, people in other districts need to be doing this. The cost of special education and the inadequate funding is causing a fiscal crisis in Connecticut and many school districts, and by extension, the cities. So it's really very important that we do our part because if we are not contacting them, if we are not asking and pushing that that cap be removed and that they fund special education the way they should be funding it, then we have no right to be complaining about it. So I'm going to sincerely ask people to do what they can, go online and send emails to your legislators, send emails to people who aren't your legislators, other legislators. We just have to make it known how important this is. And with that, I will hand it over to Mrs. Brown for the financial details of the report from the meeting.
Thank you. Our committee met just this last Monday evening on the 6th of January, and at that time, I had the report ready for the close of the second quarter, or the snapshot from December 31st. Our expenditures continue as we expected in most areas of the budget, but again, we do see the trend of rising special education costs. Most notably, we are seeing additional expenditures in the area of para educator salaries, professional services, district place tuitions, and then in conjunction with that, the out-of-area transport. The additional expenditures at the close of December have caused an overall deficit in special education at this time of approximately $433,000. Now for reference, at the close of December, this time last year, the Special Education Department overall was over budget 2.2 million. So that is a considerable improvement over our progress last year. In particular, that tuition line, we've improved by over $800,000. So I want to thank the Board for their support in our budget preparations last year. That's allowed us to catch up on that quite a bit. We did expect that we would exceed budget in the area of tuition. We had made a request for what we call the marginal cost, and the request was $900,000 last year because when we finish developing the budget, that process finishes at about April. Since last April, we have nine additional students to the community of Bristol that require outplacement. And so the community, I guess, takes a gamble. Maybe students will move in, maybe they won't. So they have agreed to support us in that, but they also want to keep your taxes and no rate low. And so that's a decision, but we are happy for their support and know that they are behind us if and when we go over budget. Also, I wanted to point out, para educators, they appear to be over budget, but it's important to note that adding a para educator can sometimes meet the needs of a special education student and prevent a higher cost alternative. So while that line shows as over budget, usually that's an efficient use of our funding. And it keeps the child in their home school and the least restrictive environment, which is our goal. At the end of the December, the district had collected a total of $64,296 in revenue from the following sources, rental, tuition, and Medicaid. You will remember that at the end of February, we received our first installment of the special education excess cost grant, which Commissioner Vibbert was just referencing. Last year, our first installment was $2.6 million, and overall, we received $3.8 million in funding. So that will vastly change our bottom line once we receive those installments. Right now, as of the end of December, our bottom line, our operating expenses are $74,490 in deficit. Again, for reference, at this time last year, we were $674,000 in deficit. So we are improving. In order to mitigate the budget deficit, currently, we have issued a budget freeze to all departments. We're allowing only spending for essential items that directly support curriculum or essential items for maintenance and classroom support. I believe it's far too early to attempt an end-of-the-year forecast, but we are hopeful that the freeze is going to help us complete the year closer to our budget figure. And that differential, at this time last year, we're $600,000 better than we were. And our deficit last year, at the end of the year, was $627,000. So I'm hopeful we'll come in much closer to budget. Any questions on the snapshot?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a comment, not really a question, but when I was up at the legislature this year, they did change the carryforward to 2%. So if you were fortunate to reach the projections that you hope, and we have a surplus, maybe we can reach an agreement with the Board of Finance to carry forward up to 2% of our budget going forward, to think of it in optimistic terms.
I love the positive thought. So moving on with regard to the cafeteria, we took a tour, the food service director, David Folds, myself, Dr. Carbone, and two of our commissioners toured Bristol Central High School, West Bristol K8, and Chippens Middle School to view the cafeteria services overall. We did see some pretty good management of student movement during the busiest of those lunch waves. And we observed, we timed them getting through the lines from the start of the lunch wave, and all got through at all three schools within seven minutes. So we were pretty happy to see that. Regarding the cafeteria financials, you will notice that the December 31st snapshot depicts a deficit of approximately $105,000. But please recall, during the month of December, we had three snow days and we had two late openings. So that considerably changed our reimbursement from the federal Healthy Foods Program, excuse me. But it didn't change our purchasing and preparation. So we will catch up on that. I don't expect that we're going to have a deficit anywhere near that number, so we'll monitor that closely and keep reporting out. Had we had school those three days and not had two late openings, we would be very close to where we recorded last month. And with regard to appropriation and transfers, there is nothing of significance to report. I do have Mrs. Colkin's special education report because she's unable to be here, so unless you have questions, I'll go right into that. She is reporting that Bristol students identified as requesting special education programming has reached 20.57% of our enrollment. As you're likely aware, the prevalence rate in Bristol schools fluctuates monthly, and it has ranged from 19% to 23% during the previous year and the current year. The identification rate for December, the month of December, was 20.48%. Overall, newly enrolled students in Bristol during the month of December, 25% of those newly enrolled were already identified as eligible for special education programming and services. It doesn't mean outplace, that's just identified as receiving services. I had already shared with you that since April of 2019, we have nine newly registered students that came to us already placed in an out-of-district special education program. It is important to note that in addition to special education programming requirements, by January 1st of this school year, our school staff have conducted over 100 risk assessments. We have conducted 25 psychiatric evaluations and received requests for five independent educational evaluations. And lastly, as of January 1, we have 115 of our 1,719 students requiring out-of-district placements at special education school programs, and 57 students that require special education programming services at other public district schools and magnet schools. And we appreciate your continued support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. Next is the Chair Report, and I am going to be discussing some highlights from the Board of Education retreat that we had on December 18th, 2019. The retreat consisted of the nine Commissioners that you see before you, Dr. Carbone and Dr. Villanova. A few things that were discussed was that our norms and rules of engagement were condensed, as I read at the start of this meeting. The Bristol Board of Education's goals were adjusted just in terms of the placement. We moved safe learning environment to be before the gap in the achievement, in academic achievement rather, because we all feel that if students don't feel safe, they will not be able to learn. Some of the other things that were discussed that I think are very important and I'm very excited about is beginning this January, all subcommittee meetings for the Board of Education, with the exception of personnel, will be held on Wednesday evenings. That way, we all know when and where we need to be, and it's a standing agenda that is a lot easier to remember. We also discussed communication in several aspects, communication from Board of Ed's subcommittees and the full board, communication from the superintendent to the Board of Ed Chair and to the Board of Ed at Large. And lastly, we discussed school liaison assignments. I'm going to read the updated list. So moving forward from this month, we will have our old liaisons, and starting in February, we will have new liaisons. I am pleased to be a liaison now to Bristol Central High School and to BEC. Commissioner Giantonio will be the liaison to SEPTO and West Bristol School. Commissioner Pons will be the liaison to Green Hills and Chippens Hill Middle School. Commissioner Skalenka, we are co-liaisoning Bristol Central High School, and you are doing Edgewood and Saftor. Commissioner Wilson is doing B Prep, CAPE, and CRAK. Commissioner Wadowski, Ivy Drive and Northeast. And Commissioner Viber, Bristol Eastern High School, Southside, because she loves it so much, and Hubble. One other thing that was discussed were the effective Board of Educations that we've studied thus far are accountability-driven, meaning that we want to spend less time on operational issues and leaving that to Dr. Carbone, and we need to focus more on policies that will improve student achievement. That will conclude my Chairman's Report. Pending any questions that anyone may have? No? All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the student representative reports. And tonight, we will be having the lovely Catherine Frunk from Bristol Central start us off.
Thank you for the introduction and good evening. I hope you all had a wonderful and restful break. Bristol Central has jumped back into the busy new year, and we wrapped up 2019 with some holiday fun. Leading up to Festivus, our Holiday Pep Rally, our band and chorus walked through the hallways singing and playing fun holiday music for the students. These performances wrapped up the Spirit Week we had for the week of December 20th. During that week, we also held a contest for our ramilly groups. Each advisory class was given papers that all of the students could fill out, and the paper that won was the paper that best exemplified our BC values that we participated in. The winner, Josh Latourneau, was announced this Tuesday, and he received his prize. The students were also treated to holiday music and carols on the Thursday before break as our winter concert showcased the band and chorus and the specialty groups. On that Friday, the 20th, the whole student body packed into the gym for a dance team performance, holiday-themed relay races, and fun trivia with prizes. So while classes took a break over vacation, the sports programs did not. There have been basketball games, wrestling matches, and track meets over the break. And this week, the boys swim, swim team had their first meet yesterday, and the annual Bristol Central Wrestling Tournament was Saturday, the 4th. Also, over Christmas break, Bristol Central showed some charity and generosity by providing the Christmas gifts for local families. The staff provided gifts to the Southside Family Resource Center, and students of the Interact Club donated gifts to their adopted four families. During the month of December, we saw some new faces. On December 12th... On December 12, the Future Teachers Club visited our Southside classes after school. This past Monday, a new Rotary Club member, Mr. Soler, came to visit the Interact Club. Western New England University visited Bristol Central for an onsite decision day. And for students who are interested, local barber, Ellie Manella, offered free haircuts to the students before break. And for the spring, there will be a prom dress boutique. And at the boutique, there will be gently-used prom dresses donated for students who cannot get to stores for the prom. Also, on the topic of prom, Junior Prom Committee is having their first meeting on the 17th. Looking forward, the drama department is preparing for their spring musical, In the Heights. And coming up at the end of January are the dreaded midterms, which will start January 22. Cocoa and crams are annual after-school program that runs over two days for students wanting to study or cram for their midterms. Hot cocoa and cookies are provided along with rambasters who will be there to offer any academic help. As a senior, I've learned that college applications are only half the battle. Scholarships are just as important for students. Any students that need help with scholarships are encouraged to go to Scholarship Help After-School Program run by Ms. Pasternak on Wednesdays. Recently, we've said some goodbyes. We celebrated the retirement party for Mr. Hernandez, Ms. Davis, and Ms. Martin, who have all made a great impact on Bristol Central. We've also had to say goodbye to Ms. Field, one of the guidance counselors at Central. We came together as a school to remember her, and our B.C. family showed support. We're looking forward to what the year has in store for Bristol Central and the many fun things coming up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Madison Turner will be representing Bristol Eastern.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Commissioners. Although December was short, BHS had quite a few events. First off, for the arts, there were plenty of events held. Our Beta Club presented a Christmas carol and had three separate showings for the public. In addition to this, there were holiday craft fairs put on by both Beta and NHS, which had great turnout. Also, in the arts, we had a combined holiday chorus and band concert on December 18 for the public. And the same concert was held for our students on December 20. Also, on December 20, for our school in the holiday season, we held our first winter wonder lunch, which gave students the ability to participate in holiday-themed activities and offer acts of kindness toward one another. We were also given snow cones to enjoy, so we thank administration for that wonderful day. That day served as the last day of our 26 Days of Kindness program that was initiated several years ago to honor those affected by the Newtown tragedy. During the 26 school days leading up to the holiday vacation, we set aside a different opportunity each day to show an act of kindness to others. Coming up in January, we are hosting our Grade 8 Open House for students and families currently in 8th grade on the 14th. We are looking forward to meeting the students who will be freshmen next year at BHS. At that event, they'll learn about the classes they can take and the sports and clubs and activities they can participate in. Also, midterm exams will be held during the last week of January, which will also bring Semester 1 to a close. Thank you.
And now, Dr. Carbone will give the superintendent report.
Full disclosure, there was a pen malfunction.
It's right there, okay.
Well, Commissioner Giantonio had a doc because there was a little vent, and I apologize. It was definitely out of camera.
I'm not even going to pretend. Good evening, Commissioners. The start of a new year and a new decade seems most fitting for me to revisit with you our district priorities, but more importantly, share with you the indicators of success that we have set for the next five years. Earlier this school year, I shared with both you and the public, the parent community, the actions that Central Office Team and I would employ to solicit feedback from our community members, from our parents, and from our teachers in reference to ways to inform our work and improve our work in the future. The information gained through the Listening Tour and Learning Tour in consultation with the District Continuous Improvement Process has informed what I am about to present to you this evening, primarily the indicators of success, as I mentioned, because I've already reviewed with you the framework. As you know, Bristol Public Schools has historically achieved positive results using data to improve student outcomes while continuing to increase academic offerings available to our students across all grade levels. Our commitment to ensuring all of our students excel and that every school is high-performing is central to Bristol Public Schools becoming a district model of excellence. During the next five years, we will continue to align all innovations to the four district priorities: organizational and operational effectiveness, inspire and cultivate talent, community engagement and partnerships, and being learner-focused. Within each of the priorities, strategic actions have been identified, resulting in what I present to you, the Equity Through Excellence Framework. This framework serves as a guide as it identifies the best practice at the classroom, school, and district level. To ensure we monitor our progress, we have set indicators for success. So this is a tool that talks about our actions, but what's most important for the community to understand is that we will be measuring our success every year. And I present to you the five years indicators of success. So our commitment to our school community, our parent community, and our student community is that by 2024, 75% of our students will enroll in a two- or four-year college. By 2024, 95% of our students will graduate on time. By 2024, 72% of our students will have taken a college-bearing course and/or have had a career experience while in high school. By 2024, 63% of our 8th graders will demonstrate the skills needed to be successful in algebra. By 2024, 70% of our 3rd grade students will reach grade-level proficiency in reading. By 2024, less than 5% of our students will miss more than 10%, meaning that they will not be chronically absent of days in school. By 2021, a different date, which is in two years from now, 100% of our students will be able to identify a caring adult in grades 3 through 12 that will offer them support and guidance. And then, two other indicators that will have a tag end date of 2021. By June of 2021, Bristol Public Schools will implement a multi-tiered recruitment and retention talent development plan to ensure certified and non-certified staff represent the demographics of our school and community, meaning we grow our own. Wherever you find yourself and wherever you want to see your career move, that we have both a recruitment and a talent development plan that will meet those needs. And by 2021, Bristol Public Schools will identify and implement a comprehensive facilities and operational plan that ensures students meet clear and challenging expectations through personalized learning experiences in well-appointed schools, informed by our current and projected enrollment. Hence, the reason why earlier we're going back to engage with Mylone McBroom on what our enrollment patterns truly are. I present the indicators of success to the public as well as the school community because a framework is a framework. It's the action steps that one sets. But the indicators of success lets us know how we're doing. Each of the indicators has a marker of success for each year. The first year that we will be monitoring our growth, although we have in years past, but we did not articulate this to the community, is at the end of this school year, 1920. A reminder to the public as well as the Board that our Board workshops are coming up. And the reason why the dates are here, although already referred to, is that the budget will be created aligned to the priorities of the district. The four priorities that I just highlighted, as well as to make sure that we meet the indicators of success. And many of you will notice that our math scores are lower than our reading scores. So therefore, in the budget, one would assume that we would ask for more math supports. So the things that we show up in a budget really just address the areas that we can improve. Thank you.
Next up is our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items 8.1.A through 8.1.E.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is my pleasure to ask and also highlight that with the approval this evening of Ms. Latrano, the Bristol Eastern administrative team becomes a complete team. So at this time, I would like to introduce to the community as well as to the Board members, Ms. Melanie Latrano.
Thank you. Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. For those who don't know me, I've been a member of the Bristol Public Schools for almost 20 years, and serving as a teacher at Eastern and Central, and Science Department Chair for the past seven years. Most recently, having been appointed the interim assistant principal. It has been a pleasure to work with the students, some of your students in the past, and proudly follow their success. As I transitioned from the classroom to administration, my best support and biggest cheerleaders have been my husband, John, and three of my class of children who are here, home from Syracuse for winter break. So happy that they could be here. I'm truly humbled and honored to come to this meeting tonight and be officially appointed assistant principal. This has been a goal of mine for some time, and I'm more than ready and excited to take on this position. I owe a debt of gratitude to Carly Fortin, who has been a mentor and role model. I have learned a great deal of what it means to be a leader in the Bristol community while working with her both at the building and the OTL level. Next, thank you to Mike Higgins for believing in me to complete the admin team at Eastern. Your leadership has been invaluable and continuing to shape me into administrator that I hope to become. I look forward to working with Mike and Latonya, and we have a lot of hard work together, but we will achieve great success at Eastern. So thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Many times, we just stop and take pictures. And so this is a family picture moment because you have your family. So Gina, can you do the honors? And yes, we will. Yeah. Mel and family.
Congratulations. Jinx, you owe me a coffee. Next on the agenda is public comment. Ms. Everett, is there any public comment this evening? Very well, then. We will move on to our deliberated items and the district leadership team reports. This evening, we have the pleasure of Michael Higgins, principal of Bristol Eastern High School, to present the program of studies for this year.
Good evening, Commissioners. Happy New Year. As Bristol Eastern and Bristol Central rotate the duty of updating the high school program of studies each year, it was Bristol Eastern's turn to work on the updates this past fall in preparation already for the 2020-2021 school year class offerings for Bristol Public Schools. This year's program of studies has been revised to include the language articulated in the Bristol Public Schools' vision of the graduate so that students and parents may see our course offerings as they connect and relate to what we hope to be the culminating result in terms of the kind of skills our students will take with them once they graduate from Bristol Public Schools. Along with the inclusion of the vision of the graduate language, the graduation requirements have been updated to reflect the differences between the requirements for next-year juniors and seniors versus next-year's freshmen and sophomores. While some of these changes are subtle upon first look, they are actually quite substantial and we want to make sure that depending on when a student enters high school, that the student and his or her family are aware of the requirements so that they can chart a proper course to credit attainment and on-time graduation. The graduation requirements in all courses within the program of studies have had prior approval from the Board of Education. To further assist in providing clarity for students and families, the course offerings by department have been designated as those that will fall into the category of meeting STEM requirements in terms of courses and electives, as well as those that will meet the humanities requirements for courses and electives. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the program of studies at this time.
No questions for you?
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well. Okay, under new business, we did have a few things added to the agenda. First, I would like to ask for a motion to authorize administration to request a special appropriation from the Board of Finance in the amount of $285,000 to be applied to a new gym floor at Northeast Middle School. Waiting on a motion. Thank you. And seconded? Anyone?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I also am now going to ask for a motion to approve the 10-year capital improvement plan as written. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, we will move on to building reports. Dr. Dieter, can you please give us an update on MBIAMS? I'm going to make an abbreviation for that abbreviation because it's a tongue twister.
Hello again. The Building Committee for the Memorial Boulevard and Tridistrict Arts Magnet School met in December. At this time, I would like to update you on the following. We had updates from architects, which included information on mechanicals, including the heating and cooling systems. At this time, we're just looking at, we haven't made any selections. We're just looking at the types of systems that would be appropriate to manage that building. Our construction manager provided us with a revised timelines as well as information regarding the building turnover, which has occurred. So for winterization and monitoring, we've turned the building over to Mono and Downs. We've had several preliminary meetings for FFE, which is fixtures, furniture, and equipment. This did include teachers, other BOE experts, and all were asked to provide input and suggestions to architects for final planning on the classroom spaces. So the physical things that are required in those spaces, keeping in mind multi-use as well as dedicated use proposals. We also looked at the Building Committee calendar for 2020, and that was finalized and put forward. Additional activities that have occurred over the month include our pre-con meetings, which happen one time per month at QA&amp;A for our architects. And the FFE activities have gone out, have expanded to also include both the general community spaces and the theater. I'd like to, once again, appeal to you to follow us on Twitter. And our Twitter handle is @buildingMBIAMS. So we do provide updates there regarding meetings and any information that is relevant and quick. Our next Building Committee meeting is Thursday, January 23 at 6:30. That will be in Room 36 here in the Board of Education. And lastly, I'm not going to distribute this because then I will take everyone's attention[1732.76] attention away from the next items, but I will leave our Memorial Boulevard winter update on the table here, and I welcome members of the board as well as the public to grab one of those on the way out. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just to quick on Dr. Dieter, could you just repeat the Twitter?
Yes. It's on here, okay, but it's @buildingMBIAMS.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Dieter.
Thank you.
Now is the time for our liaison and information reports, and again, a reminder, this is liaison reports for the old liaisons, not the new ones that are starting next month. I will start to my left. Commissioner Wodowski, do you have any liaisons or information reports that you'd like to share?
I will next month.
Awesome. I look forward to it. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I'll provide a CREG report, and as the old rep, and I guess I'm gonna be the new rep.
The forever rep for CREG.
Those that care, I am the acting chair or president, because the current chair resigned, and I'll be the chair president next term. What I want to talk to you about tonight was the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and I'm not gonna talk to you about budgets or anything like that, but in the CAFRA, which is what it's, that is called, and each education agency must file that by the end of December, as well as the municipality does it on behalf of the Board of Education, it's all combined together, and it, it's submitted to the state. But an organization like CREG also must finish it by December and get it to all the constituencies, and this document is sent to all the state agencies, State Department of Education, OPM, DCF, all the legislators get this, so the organizations' financials are completely transparent, as well as the whole document is up on their website and has been dispersed, and if anybody wishes this document, I have it and can send it to you electronically. Most of, all the financial information is taken from a division of grants from the state. Bristol is one of 35 membered local education agencies which make up CREG. One of my fellow board members liked to call us, we're the owners of CREG. I think that's a, probably a little bit of a stretch, but we were, originally when the organization was formed in 1972, the 35 towns ceded the money to start CREG. CREG is one of six regional education service centers, which provide resources to local education agencies. They provide resources typically when it started in 72, they were for those things that the local education agency didn't have the economy skill to provide, like professional development, or some transportation, or some, especially it wasn't as developed as it was in 72 as it is today, but some special education services. So Bristol, we spent at CREG last year, $2.3 million. That ranks out 10th of the 35 towns, the biggest towns there, or cities that utilize the CREG services are Hartford, New Britain, East Hartford, and Manchester. So Bristol is right in the middle of those services, and those are not all tuition for the magnet schools, but they're also special education services, as well as other services that we might purchase for CREG. Like for instance, many years ago, when we did the special educational audit, we paid for CREG to do that, so that, that would be the kind of thing that we would pay for from them. I'm just giving you some background for some of the new members who might not understand One of the other things I wanted to talk about was our per pupil expenditures, and this, this per pupil expenditure includes the local contribution, and the state contribution, and the federal contribution to education. And Bristol spent in 2018, which is the last year the data was available for, $15,092, which is much lower than most of our peer towns. For example, Plainville during the same period of time spent $17,532, Manchester $16,163, and Farmington $17,185. So you can see that we are very frugal and economical in Bristol. Bristol's daily average membership was 8,206 students, and I compare that, or contrast that to 2010, which was 8,784. That drop is across 13 schools, so you might say, oh, we've had a 500-student drop over 10-year period, but you have to remember that it's over 13 schools and over 13 grade levels, so it's really not as significant as you might think. There really isn't any kind of, you know, overwhelming savings by that loss of number of students. And I will mention that the demographers who came in and gave us these studies over the years thought our drop was going to be much more significant, but there was a lot of factors that make putting a target number on that very difficult. One is the birth, you know, it's easy to sort of calculate the birth rates, but immigration, housing, housing patterns change, and just the economy of certain municipalities versus other municipalities will change that migration pattern. And we've seen that here in Bristol, and that is one of the reasons we haven't seen the drop in the number of students that we anticipated. I will mention that CREG operates 25 schools and programs. We often hear about the magnet schools, but we also offer other programs like our program for the hearing impaired and other sort of statewide programs that we provide, not just the magnet schools. And so, but I did want to categorize, we have almost a little short 200 students going to the magnet schools for CREG, and I categorize them into three areas. We have 103 students going to what I call arts and humanity-themed magnet schools. We have 44 students who are going to science, technology, innovation schools, and 32 all others, which might be a typical, like an international magnet school for elementary or something like that, is what I put into that last category. So that was one of the reasons, you know, for us seeking the money from the state for our magnet school is to try to attract some of those students who are getting education outside of Bristol for the arts, to bring them back into Bristol so that they could experience that themed art education here in Bristol. So, under the current funding model, just so we understand what's going on here in Connecticut, CREG receives $10,443 from the, in a state grant, and then they build a local school district for the students that participate in their programs in amount. And typically, that amount ranges from $4,000 to $4,500 per student to supplement the grant that the state gives to CREG, but is not sufficient to pay for all the education costs. And of course, those, that amount is exclusive of special education, which we as a local district are responsible for those special education costs. You'll see in our budget workshops in a few weeks, an allowance for our students who attend CREG schools, and that's something that the superintendent and her team have to manage, because it's really hard to know who is gonna be going to those magnet schools, how many they're gonna be, and how much the charge is gonna be. And so, I just wanted to highlight that to you. And then my final point was both the creation, the setup of magnet schools by CREG and the magnet schools by Hartford were set up to ameliorate a segregation case known as Chef v. O'Neill. And just as a side note, we do have many students, in addition to our CREG students, who go to the Hartford magnet schools, and we do not pay anything for the Hartford magnet schools. The state effectively pays for those in Hartford. But, so, this, this conversation is important so that we all understand school finance is extremely complicated, and there's a lot of different buckets and a lot of different areas, and so, as new board members and the community, it's, we have to grasp how this plays and how we, we interplay with it. So thank you, that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner River?
Pardon me?
Oh, I said thank you, I'm moving on to Commissioner River. Commissioner Pons?
No. No, thank you.
Commissioner Giantonio?
Hi, I just have something to report. The, the next meeting of the Greater Bristol Special Education PTO is going to take place on Tuesday, January 14th, at 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Those meetings are now at Bristol Public Library, they were previously at Chapter 126, who has moved their operations back to Hartford. The topic of the next meeting is going to be presented by PATH, and it's the Parent-to-Parent Listener Training. Those meetings, the meeting notices posted on their Facebook page, which is called the Greater Bristol Special Education PTO, and it will also be shared on a lot of the community Facebook pages, so please pass the word along for any parents interested in that type of training.
Awesome. I will continue moving down the row, and I will give my liaison report last. Commissioner Carlson. Commissioner Skalenka.
I just have an email from Mr. Iredondo about what they did at Edgewood.
Okay.
I'd like to read.
Go ahead.
So basically, what happened at Edgewood in December, which is great, they collected $500 for the CCMC for their pajama day, which I think is awesome. My daughter spent some time there, so it's great. They also collected 80 new tours and donated to Salvation Army for the Bristol families in need. That's always important. And the library, Ms. Dunlop, who runs Karen's Closet, she, that basically helps keep kids warm during the winter time, they collect clothes, hats, knit, knitted gloves and whatnot, scarves, all from Gemati Center, Zion Lutheran, and the First Congressional Church, ladies' guilds, and that's a great partnership that we have, and thank you, Karen, for doing that. And Emmanuel Lutheran Church, who supports their Secret Santa project, families in need receive new outfits and clothing, which is, you know, a great thing for Bristol, for being all heart. And also, on March 2nd, they're gonna be doing their Read Across America Day, and I look forward to coming to that. That's it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner O'Brien?
Nothing.
Councilman Kelly?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
I just want to, if I may?
Of course.
Commissioner Wilson, we have in Bristol been participating in Sustainable CT, and we are one of, to kind of crescendo what you shared, we are one of very few communities that will see an increase in our student age population in the next decade of 1%. So we do need to also be mindful of those data points that are out there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be giving my last liaison report for West Bristol School before I hand the reins over to Commissioner Giantonio next month.
Big shoes, big shoes.
West Bristol School showed their school spirit during the month of December. 2,222 food items were collected during Grinchmas. That's 80 more than last year. All students in the K through 8 participated in friendly competitions during the reindeer games, and the PTO hosted a family pasta night that was well-attended. Thank you very much. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very well. Good night, everybody.